Hi Jesse, just did audio check. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much.
I guess I'm just taking an audio check too. Sounds good. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Thirty having arrived. I will call to order the special common council meeting of Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty four and ask the first to please call the role.
Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayanze?
Present.
Alder Mayanze is present. Aldo Romo?
Present.
Aldo Romo is present. Aldo Tischler?
Up here.
Aldo Tischler is present. Aldo Revere?
Here.
Aldo Revere is present. Aldo Vidavir?
Here.
Aldo Vidavir is present. Aldo Weheli?
Here.
Aldo Weheli is present. Aldo Bennett?
Here.
Aldo Bennett is present. Aldo Conklin?
Present.
Aldo Conklin is present. Aldo Curry?
Here.
Aldo Curry is present. Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Vice President Duncan is present. Aldo Evers?
Here.
Aldo Evers is present. Aldo Field?
Here.
Aldo Field is present. President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
President Figueroa Cole is present. Aldo Govindarajan?
Here.
Aldo Govindarajan is present. Aldo Ugher?
Here.
Aldo Ugher is present. Aldo Harrington McKinney?
Harrington McKinney here. For the record, I will keep my uh camera off because of medical reasons.
Aldo Harrington McKinney is present. Aldo Knox?
Here.
Aldo Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Burris is excused. And with that, Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Alright, so. But just as per usual, I'll remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of the city of Madison. I'd ask this to do that with grace and kindness and respect for each other. And and to, of course, refrain from using profanity in our remarks. And we uh have no honoring resolutions or any other items on tonight's agenda. So the first thing I have to ask you is if there are any disclosures or refusals on tonight's agenda. Being none, then we will go on to item referred to this meeting. Uh the item on our agenda is. Legisstar eight, four, 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 three, authorizing the scheduling of a referendum related to exceeding the municipal property tax limits in the city of Madison. President Figueroa Cole, a motion please.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And we'll start uh with questions for staff if there are any. There discussion of uh.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the motion would be the substitute if that's what you're trying to adopt, so.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. Uh is there any objection from the body that the motion is to adopt the substitute? Seeing objection, that's what's before us. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the substitute? President Figueroa Cole?
Is it possible for Dave to just provide an overview of the substitute, please? Thank you.
Director Schmidiki?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh certainly. So um the substitute that's before you essentially updates uh numbers that were in the original resolution. Based on both information provided by the Department of Revenue on August fifteenth. As well as the impact of the city's um debt issuance, which also occurred on September fifteenth. Uh I sent an email to the council yesterday uh working through the specific numbers. Um I'll talk generally about the changes. First of all is the um uh the uh amount of the increase or the limit. Which in the original resolution was estimated at two and a half percent. Uh based on Department of Revenue numbers, that's now been updated to two point nine seven percent. And that's the combination of what's called net new construction. And um you we also get a factor that's added for the uh. Half of the value, the incremental value in any closed tax increment districts. So those two numbers together add up to the two point nine seven percent. The other chain or another change is in the maximum allowable levy under the state levy limits. That's been changed to um the number you see in the substitute, which is two hundred ninety six million one hundred forty nine thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars. That reflects the combination of the new net construction uh and um closed tid factors along with the debt service change. Um that occurred uh based on the actual debt service amounts from the sale on August fifteenth. Um the other uh other than that, um the other change is simply the it's still a an additional seven point four percent. And then because of the slightly lower levy limit uh maximum, adding the twenty two million to that slightly changes that total number of what the levy. The maximum allowable levy would be changed to, which is that three hundred and eighteen million one hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars. So um that reflects the uh, I think the substantive changes in the referendum question and in the um uh in the resolution.
Thank you. Aldo Conklin, questions?
Um thank you, Mayor. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but is this the right time that we're talking about um what Marcia, the substitute that Marcia put in front of us? Are we speaking on that or no?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there other questions for staff? At this time? If not, it's been moved and seconded. Aldo Romo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Aldo Conklin, for process presaging this. Motion to adopt the amendment that I submitted to you all and as in Legisstar, instead of twenty two million, it would. Um increase the amount to twenty nine million and explains more about moving the special charge amount.
Aldo, is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay, so Aldo Romo will move a second substitute. Is there a second for the second substitute?
I'll I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Thank you, Aldo. So moved and seconded the second substitute, which I believe you all have available to you. And Aldo Romo, would you like to speak to it more?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for um considering this because on the very surface of it. It appears to be asking more when we're hearing alarm from all our residents and about um for a referendum and. So I understand um your hesitation, but. In in March, my journey started on this topic of the special charges and buying them back. And I I did not come up with this idea. Uh and I understand several of you also spoke with um Street Superintendent Charlie Rowmines. Who did come up with this idea of buying back the special charges as a way to add um because it's more. Um equitable for taxpayers on some level to to um use the tax levy to pay for services and it is. A more regressive special charge tax. And also it creates opportunities because we're not just looking at twenty twenty five, but we're looking at the next six years. To create a little more wiggle room in the levy limit and the options that are before us. So I thought about this for a long time and decided not to move all of the 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 two special charges, the urban forestry charge and the resource recovery. But just to move the urban forestry charge, that's it's it's estimated for next year to be seven point five million. And um at first I just didn't realize it was at seven point five million and I um asked to move seven million. And then talk through the the what it meant to leave a half a million in the the special charge, which. I think Director Schmidiki can help answer if anyone does have questions about that. But then I worked with staff to kind of explain it and, you know, I I I think on the bottom line is for the average taxpayer, it seems kind of odd, but. Asking for more money, but it's moving positive money around is going to cost them less. So but at some point, you know, some taxpayers will pay more, you know, and and there's that information in the letter I sent you and to some degree also in the. In the um fiscal note. So I thought I would put it on the table because it it seems like, you know, one of the we went through that process in April of trying to. Figure our values and priorities and what was some of the things that were guiding us. And as you all may recall, I amended that substitute and one of the things I really. And it didn't maybe seem like it made sense to you, but I put in there the thing about moving away from non um tap tap. Property tax revenues because I thought about how we could um manipulate this special charge. Anyway, so I'm putting it before you. I think it's a it's a modest benefit for taxpayers. But um I will stop there and and try not to chime in a lot, but I might speak some more.
Thank you, Aldo. And so what's before us is the Romo second substitute. Are there questions for staff on the second substitute? Aldo Conklin?
Uh thank you, Chair, and um thank you, Aldo Romo. I apologize for not uh addressing you correctly last time. Um so I did have some questions for staff because I want to know. What exactly buyback means like? Ca- can we just explain the process more of how this seven point five or seven million? How, tell me how this is going to work. I just need to know. Thank you.
Director Schmidiki?
Thank you, Mayor. Um Aldo Conklin, what the um amendment would do, Aldo Romo's amendment. Is to increase uh the amount of the referendum question from twenty two million to twenty nine million, so a seven million dollar increase. It would reduce the urban forestry special charge, which is estimated for twenty twenty five. To need to be at about seven point five million. It would reduce that by seven million to five hundred thousand dollars. Um so the special charge would remain in place. What the amendment does is basically um ask the council when it is doing completing its work on the twenty twenty five budget. Uh assuming a referendum um under this proposed amendment is adopted, would reduce the urban forestry special charge by that seven million dollars. Uh the urban forestry special charge um. Uh s- at seven million dollars is about um eighty four dollars per year for an average. Um basically customer or or property owner. So that would be probably a um. A homeowner, for example. Um so under the amendment. The reduction or the increase in property taxes would add seventy three dollars per year in taxes to the average value home compared to the twenty two million dollar. Um substitute amendment. It would decrease um that eighty four dollars. Um related to the urban forestry special charge. So that's that idea of an offset. And then um so as you'll notice for somebody who has an average value home, they would see a net. Decrease of about eleven dollars. That decrease uh gets larger for properties that are uh have a value that's lower than four hundred fifty seven thousand dollars. And then actually um for properties uh above roughly five hundred and twenty five thousand. Uh they would end up having um to pay, you know, more in that combination of. The reduction, the urban forestry special charge and the increase in the property tax. And that's because the property taxes. Uh you know, assessed on a rate basis, a percentage. And the urban forestry special charge is a flat amount uh put on um on each property. So that's the best interaction that would occur under the um proposed amendment.
So if I get this right. If we ask for seven million more dollars. To help with the urban forestry charge to alleviate some of that debt, then they will ultimately pay less. If the referendum passes for their property taxes, is that what I understood?
The the combination of the seven million dollar additional increase in property taxes compared to the reduction in the urban forestry special charge. For those who ha- have a property, a home that would be valued um at or below five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay. And what did you say about the four hundred and fifty seven if their home was valued less than?
The the four hundred and fifty seven thousand is simply the average value home in the city.
Okay, 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 gotcha. But you're saying if it was less than what what was the last number you just said, five twenty five?
About five hundred and twenty five thousand. That's where it sort of breaks even.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldo Aldo Tischler, questions?
Yeah, uh so Dave, if we stay with the um the originally proposed uh referendum of twenty two million, is that going to cause? Any change to the urban forestry? I mean, there's still will still be that it's not like that money is going to go away. We'll just be the be the same same status quo, correct? And then the other question is because a question was asked a while back about how um increases in in the. The referendum also affects uh renters. And I wonder if you if you crunch those numbers at all for this this additional uh um additional dollar amount.
Uh on on your first question, um yeah, the assumption is that the urban forestry special charge would. Uh remain in place uh based on the cost to continue estimates. It's assumed. That the amount of the special charge would be seven and a half million dollars in twenty twenty five. Uh on your question of renters, um Aldo Tischler, did you mean for the twenty two million? Is that the?
Well, you had sent you sent uh numbers for twenty two million. I was wondering if you've had time. I know it is a lot of not a number has been thrown at you in recent days, but. Have you had a chance to to crunch numbers for for the twenty nine million?
Uh I can do that pretty quickly. So at the um twenty two million dollar increase, the estimate, and I want to be really clear that this is a very sort of rough estimate. Uh we don't nearly have as much information on sort of individual um apartment units, for example, compared to the average value home. So I just want to say the numbers I'm giving you with that very strong caveat. Um but at the twenty two million dollar uh increase level, the estimated um. Annual tax associated with that on what sort of an average rental unit would be about eighty five dollars a year or about seven dollars a month. Uh for at twenty nine million. Uh that would increase to a hundred and twelve dollars, so roughly um twenty seven dollars more. And a couple dollars more per month.
Thank you, Aldo. Aldo Govindarajan, question?
Yes, thank you. Um thank you for crunching those numbers, Dave. Um I'll start my question kind of based off what Aldo Tischler was asking. In your example, you just get gave with the average rental unit. Can you explain what the average rental unit looks like? Is it a duplex? Is it multi family housing? What does that look like?
Uh as I said, my answer to the other question, this is a a lot of caveats with this. Uh this is really based on a a combination of some information from um planning community economic development. That looks at um averages for fourplexes, eightplexes, um a recent um sort of. Remodeled apartment building, uh and then some newer buildings and just takes the average of all of those. So it's kind of an average of a a variety of different types of multi-unit uh buildings.
And and if I might interject real quick. Multi-family units pay a higher urban forestry special charge as well. So they pay a hundred and fifty three dollars and some change a year versus the eighty five. So. That change is based on single family versus multiple multifamily. So there they may, the property value may be worth more in a multifamily maybe, but the discount from the special charge would be greater as well.
Okay, thank you. Um that's so I want to ask when it comes to the urban forestry forestry special charge. Understanding that multifamily unit um housing, they pay more. How does that charge kind of get spread across the city? Like who actually pays into it? Is it all residents? Is it maybe the land, the property owner owner? Can you delve into that?
Uh Aldo Govindarajan, do you mean for renters or just generally the types of?
Generally, but also renters, yes. Like my focus may only mostly renters, but I like to get an overall perspective as well.
Sure. So the urban forestry special charge will be paid by the property owner, whoever that is. Um. And then it's really up to the property owner if they have less fees, how that's distributed, and that could be affected by the lease and other sort of arrangements. Um the urban forestry special charge is basically on a variety of types of property, groups of property. Uh that includes residential, uh multifamily, um commercial and industrial. And then um some government customers. And then uh there are stormwater parcels. That as a class that some of which are government owned. So let's say the city stormwater utility and some are vacant property. properties upon which the stormwater charge, as well as the urban forestry special charge, um, is assessed. And so um the rough distribution of that for residential, and this is in the fiscal note, a little less than two-thirds is residential. Um, ten percent is that commercial industrial, government's about four percent, and um multifamily, six percent, and those stormwater parcels are about fifteen percent. Now, the um uh Alder Bocier asked us to look at um uh, what's the sort of share of urban forestry special charge parcels that are tax exempt? And we did a quick look at that uh this afternoon and um determined, based on the twenty-twenty-three urban forestry special charge, about eleven percent of the charge revenues come from tax-exempt parcels. That would include government parcels, government-owned parcels.
Okay, understood. I'm trying to get an idea of like, if we did um decrease the special charge a little bit in favor of increasing the referendum five by five, seven million dollars, who that would benefit? Um, understanding that the multifamily units are about a hundred fifty-three dollars, is that per customer, per property, per unit? Can you answer that?
I think that's per parcel. Um, Charlie might have that information, but um again, we have not done that analysis, and I I would really hesitate to make that sort of leap uh in terms of how that would be distributed by, you know, to each of a unit in a multifamily uh parcel. Uh, we were able to look, I think, pretty readily at um uh, home value, uh, because that is a pretty clear class and make that comparison.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, you here?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And uh, as you just heard from uh Director Schmiedeke, we were of course on this afternoon for a piece of information uh that I thought might be relevant once, once we look not at the next year or two, but we take a look at that longer span that we're uh now trying to accomplish in the uh in the long-range plans uh for the operating budget. Um, but I would like to say I I really, I I've been intrigued by this concept of the swap ever since uh uh Mr. Romine's described it to me, and uh I'm just delighted that uh Alder Rumel put it forward so that we could really get some thought put into it. Uh, but since seeing the uh Romel alternate, uh, I've been thinking a lot about how this works out in that multi-year plan, uh, if we had an approved twenty-two million versus an approved twenty-nine million dollar referendum. And uh, that's what brought me to ask the question about the proportion uh of a fee like uh the forestry and and so forth that also go to properties that don't pay property tax, or at least they don't pay all of it. And and I think that's important i- i- in that uh in that circulated long-range plan with an approved twenty-two million dollars, it's, I think, in year three, uh, basically the twenty-twenty-seven uh fiscal operating budget where we start to need to increase uh fees to do that. And uh uh in in that version, of course, there could be a thousand other versions. We look at bringing in a ten million dollar increase in fees of one sort or another in that time. Let's suppose that we're bringing back and resuscitating the forestry uh one at that point in time, and you we essentially have to bring it back. And and I think mathematically, and that's going to be my question for Director Schmiedeke. Uh, I I think once that comes back, then we start to see the impact of the fact that when we raise a dollar off of fees, as regressive as they might be compared to the property tax, raising a dollar there means that uh eighty-nine percent of that dollar gets a portion to property taxpayers, but eleven percent gets a portion to uh parcels that don't pay property tax. And so as that accumulates over time, I think it tends, it may overwhelm the savings that we would get for a couple of years more progressively uh for lower-valued properties. And and I realize that's kind of complicated math, but uh Director Schmiedeke, if you could just, i- i- am I thinking properly about that, or have I got my math all tied up and incorrect? It seems to me that that eleven percent could be pretty important once we get past the first couple of years in terms of offsetting uh the benefits, the progressive benefits of the first couple of years.
Yeah, I I think that's, you know, one way to look at it. I I will say that the eleven percent, um, and I just want to be clear about this, that some of that is government-owned properties. So while they may be tax-exempt, they're effectively paying the charge from some sort of revenue that's provided by a ratepayer or a taxpayer or something like that. So um, in contrast to perhaps other tax-exempt parcels that are paying from other types of revenues, whether, let's say, it be a hospital or something like that, just so we're clear on that. I think you know, the special charge, you know, on, you know, at a very basic level compared to the property tax, there is some difference in progressivity and regressivity, just because the special charge and the way that it has to be assessed is going to be um effectively in the major classes like residential, a flat fee. And so as a result, um, lower-value properties will proportionally pay more than those that are higher-value properties compared to the property tax, which is a percentage. Now, looking at the totality of what might need to be done over the next five years, having a higher percentage of property tax revenue in that, in that, you know, all of the things being equal, might be slightly more progressive than, you know, the lower property tax amount and the higher um special charge amount, because what's that mix of revenues um going forward? But again, a lot of this is on uh on the margin, and with the special charges, whether it's eleven percent or maybe it's closer to six or seven percent with, when you take out the government um owned properties, that it's going to be pretty um, uh, pretty narrow on the on the margins. Um, but it it does help to be able to have some portion of that revenue coming from uh non uh or from tax-exempt uh parcels, even though it is um a a small share of that revenue stream. Um, I hope that helped answer your question, so.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm gonna profusely apologize, but my brain hurts. Um, and I appreciate all the work that has gone in to make these calculations and provide some glimpse, but we know that's all an estimation. And I thought I had it until Alder Yu-Gir, um, maybe made me question, so I want to clarify. The special resource ur- urban, you guys know what I'm talking about, special recovery costs. Seven point five million will be come back if this substitute goes forward with the increased referendum amount. But for how long does that carry? Just for twenty-twenty-five or through twenty-twenty-seven?
So it would replace seven million of the urban forestry special charge, and that's really up to the council in future budgets. So the first step would be uh, in terms of what's in the amendment, the council would have to decide in the twenty-twenty-five budget to reduce the special charge by seven million dollars. This amendment does not do that. It simply adds seven million to the property tax increase and requests that the council in its um adoption of the twenty-twenty-five city operating budget, reduce the special charge amount by seven million dollars. And then the question is, um, what happens in future years? Now, um, what the mayor described in the July council meeting in terms of the plan, we need some form of revenues in future years because the structural deficit remains um an issue. Clearly not at the level we're looking at in twenty-twenty-five, hopefully. But um some decisions are going to need to be made around whether it's, you know, new special charges, putting back on a special charge that might be taken off through this amendment uh or other approaches. Um, possibly reductions in 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 services and things like that, but that that issue will be in front of um councils in future years.
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder of the task in front of us and what we actually have control of and what is in the future, I think. I try to, I still am a a just a regular Madisonian like everyone else, but have a have the privilege of receiving more information or having a a robust, whether we like it or not, amount of information. But how to regurgitate that and even be able to share that in a tangible way for folks to understand, I think. I don't know if it's just me, but um it's a very complex issue, but it it's still thoroughly confusing. And so the reminder that twenty-twenty-five and beyond, we can't control, but twenty-twenty-five, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions? Right, seeing no further questions, look before us is the Romel amendment. Uh, is there discussion? Alder Vitterver?
I just really want to commend Alder Rumel for bringing this forward. It's an important discussion to have. Um, it really does have us have the discussion about regressive versus progressive types of taxes. Um, my concern is that there's so, so much misinformation among the public right now that um trying to float an idea of a larger amount than is quote-unquote needed, although we've obviously addressed that it will shift costs in a different way, um, will wind up harming us even more in terms of being able to actually pass the referendum. So I really want to be able to say, I would love to be able on a theoretical basis, support this, and I think that what we've seen is that we have enough of the populace that doesn't support a referendum at all because they simply don't understand why we're here. They blame us for the structural deficit that the legislature and former Governor Scott Walker caused, that I'm I'm not able to vote for it this time just because I think that the PR problem is too great. So I, again, I appreciate it very much. Having this discussion is important. Um, I commend Alder Alder Rumel, and at this point, I'm not going to vote for this um increased amount of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, much in the space?
Yeah, I think that I'm, I I I agree with Alder Vitterver and um on the fact that it's a hard sell. Twenty-two million is a hard sell, and and for regular people who, like me, like this is, you know, mind-boggling to me how how much money, first of all, is in there and and how much we need, and um the misinformation is just ridiculous, the just disingenuity um from former leaders um has really muddied the waters as well, and and looking at at twenty-nine million feels so daunting to me that I am not sure I can get behind it, especially if it's only nominal, from what I'm understanding, uh, and only for a limited finite period of time. So I I'm leaning towards no, but also like how wonderful of you, Alder Rumel, to bring it to us to say this is, you know, maybe we can be a little less regressive here, and um, I definitely want to thank you for that. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Tischler?
Yeah, I also want to uh thank Alder Rumel, too. I think I think I think it's just a question of timing, and I think I think the comments before that this is, this is very confusing, and just the idea of of having to raise raise the taxes in order to lower taxes can get can get confusing. So um but I I like the the progressive thinking here and 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 um, and again, I think it's just a matter, just the the timing is just not not good in the situation, at least for me.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I understand the timing, but please think about how many people don't even know there's a referendum really or what amount. So I think at some point, we have, whether we don't approve this and we approve the twenty-two million, we have our jobs cut out for us as alders trying to explain not just next year, but six years. And I really want to go on my way to thank the mayor and staff that helped prepare the July twenty-sixteenth memo with those two graphs. I've printed them out. I mean, these are like, this is a go-to thing for me. And when you look at without a referendum and with a referendum, either way, at some point, there are dramatic special, new special charges. So are we going to start telling people now what this new special charge is? And I won't pretend to be able to explain what an infrastructure charge is versus what a library charge or a parks charge could be. But they're coming back. They're coming, not back, but they're coming forward, or some things coming forward. So either way, either we have a referendum of whatever amount or we don't, we're going to have more, people are going to have to pay more money at some point. I I I don't really see how we cut our way out of this problem. So then the question is, when I went to those public meetings, some people were like, you can't just like take money and just put hot cover over Band-Aid what the gap is. What are you doing different? And that's why I think this idea has some value, because it's doing something different. It's basically if we pass the twenty-nine million and we'd have to explain it, most taxpayers would be paying the same as if there were a twenty-seven million dollar referendum and a urban forestry special charge at seven point five million. It's just in different pots. Either it's on your municipal services bill or it's on your property tax bill. And yet I get house tenants and, you know, there's, it it's not like, you know, a thing you just divide up equally. I get that, but I I think at some level, if it's it's, yeah, it's a nominal difference, but you know, when we're telling people, oh, it's only eighty-five cents a day or sixty-five cents a day, well, this would be eighty-five cents a day. I mean, we we get into that fine-grained level when you look at it like this. It's it it seems like reasonable to me, but I understand that. I, you know, at some point, I've been telling, you know, anyone who listens, I'm worried that this thing won't pass in general, but but um at at some point, I thought this was a good faith effort to have a little more equity in our approach, and I know that was one of as one of our goals. So with that, I and I understand the timing is confusing, but I think anytime you start saying, here's what we do, and you tell people that it's not a whole lot more money with this way, it's just differently allocated money. But I know, I mean, we're all kind of clever people. I think we could talk it, but, you know, I I I respect everyone's decision. But I'm going to vote for it. Thank you. Hopefully, I won't be the only one.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, can I get a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really want to show my appreciation to Alder Rumel for bringing this forward. I think it was a good conversation. Um, but I think I I I will be leaning voting against this. I understand, like, at the base principle of this, this is just a restructuring of the sources of funding we get for the city, and it might even save some money, um, taxpayer money for people. Um, but I think we, as a council, just as Alder Vitterver mentioned earlier, we might just need to show the public that we are capable of some kind of fiscal restraint um and prove it to them before we consider asking for more than what we need. Um, if we can show that later this November, then maybe I would feel a little bit more comfortable asking for that additional seven million, and I think that's what we've really been hearing from people, especially with the public comment that happened during the last meeting. Um, there has been a lot of misinformation, but I'm a little bit also worried that we might not necessarily have enough time to correct that misinformation when there's so much out there coming from um such influential people in the city as well. Um, so I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, not?
Thank you. Um, I was definitely inclined.
I was definitely inclined not to support this. But, you know, I think, one thing I think about that Alder Rummel brings up is, when we deal with these complex issues, these special charges start, and a lot of people have communicated to me about looking like we're nickel-and-dime people. We're adding these little special things for this, special tax for that. We add the wheel tax, we add this, and it starts kind of, even though it may be more equitable, it still feels like the taxpayers are getting nickelled and dined. So, I mean, I think she makes a good point. It simplifies the thing. They're going to pay it anyway. Maybe we actually get a little savings on it. And so, she changed my mind. I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Yu-Gear?
I know that on any day when I've said something that could possibly confuse Alder Curry, I probably haven't explained things very well because I know how stoochy Alder Curry is. But to simplify what I was trying to discuss in relationship to that difference between how taxpayers are affected by, whether it's 11% difference or 7% difference, the point of that was that when I look out at the longer term, it tends to eliminate, over a period of time, the progressive benefits that come from this concept of how we might shift and have a more equitable approach on the property tax side. It tends to wear away from that after time. And after all, $7 million, if it's 11%, that's $770,000 a year that we're not collecting, but otherwise would collect from otherwise parcels that don't do it. So the net result of that is that I think, depending on how fast, by my calculation, depending how fast, we could get some relief from the state. It could be a wash, or ultimately, it could be, it could be actually somewhat detrimental on an equity approach to miss that opportunity on the volume of revenue that we would obtain from non-property taxpayers. So I'm reluctantly, after being intrigued for so many months about this possibility, but I'm going to vote against this version because I don't, aside from, because I agree, it's, if I can't describe it well here, I think I'm probably going to have a real problem describing it to some of the residents of District 19. I think there is that issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely shout out to you, Alder Rummel, for creating this. I definitely love the idea. When I first saw it, I was, yeah, this makes a lot of sense. But as I sat with it and then hearing the comments today, I just think it would be a difficult sale. Like, we would have a difficult time selling it and getting other folks to really understand what we're meaning. And I'm saying this, too, knowing that previously, we decided not to fully fund the new communications position, which is Dylan's job. And so, it takes so much, it takes so much time to communicate new information to folks, and we're already not able to communicate well enough what actually is true. I think we're doing a good job communicating, but we're not altogether able to sort of, I don't know, cut back on some of the misinformation. Like, that's more of a challenge I feel like we're facing. And every conversation, it feels like I'm re-explaining what the facts are to sometimes to the same person because they're getting misinformation from somewhere else. And so unless we're also figuring, finding some dollars to also increase our ability to educate and to communicate with folks, I think we're going to be just sort of like referred to as folks who pulled a switcheroo on them. And we came to them, you know, with a, I think we started at 27 million, then we brought it down to 22 million. And then if we bump it back to 29 million, we don't know what can happen in the press. So I really do believe it's a great idea. My, the only reason I'm going to vote no is because how much information we've already shared and we're still battling misinformation and disinformation and the level of staffing that we don't have and that we decided not to fully fund to actually communicate this information that will be necessary. So I vote a no for just the communications piece alone, not for the actual proposal.
Thank you, Alder. Are there, is there any further discussion on the Rummel Amendment? Alder Rummel?
I just want to say for the record that that letter I sent you was immensely helped by our PIO, Dylan Brogan. And he came up with that in hours of looking at the fiscal notes. So I think we're capable of explaining the details of how it could benefit different kinds of taxpayers. So, you know, I just want to just to state that. And I also want to appreciate Director Schmidicki and Christine for helping me, you know, understand how to put forward a good amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other alders in the queue? So on the Rummel Amendment, and let's, we'll do a roll, because I anticipate some disagreement. All those in favor of the Rummel Amendment, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Madison?
No.
No? Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
No.
No? Alder Mayadze?
Uh, no.
No? Alder Rummel?
Yes.
Aye? Alder Tischler?
Uh, no.
No? Alder Revere?
No.
No? Alder Vitterver?
No.
No? Alder Weheli?
No.
No? Alder Bennett?
No.
No? Alder Conklin?
No.
No? Alder Curry?
No.
No? Vice President Duncan?
No.
No? Alder Evers?
No.
No? Alder Field?
No.
No? President Figueroa Cole?
No.
No? Alder Gov. Rajan?
No.
No? Alder Yu-Gear?
No.
No? Alder Harrington-McKinnney?
No.
No? Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye? Madam Mayor, I have two ayes and 17 nos. Thank you. With two ayes, the Rummel Amendment fails. But I do also want to add my appreciation to Alder Rummel for bringing this forward. I think it's a really important issue. And if we can, over time, help to educate people about the dynamics between the property tax and special charges, I think that would be to the good of our community. So what's before us is the main motion, which is the substitute. And is there discussion on the substitute? Name, none? Then, Alder Tischler?
Right. I just want to emphasize this, I mean, and this is in the fiscal notes. But this is, this is the first time that the common council has been asking residents to increase the levy. So we are, and again, this is only going back to 2005. But, you know, so I wanted just to make that, make that point. And also that, you know, that this is, this is 22 million on top of what the levy increase. So that wasn't always clear. So it's, I'm mainly just talking just to remind myself what I will be voting on. But I just wanted to get, I just want to get that out. That's all. That's the discussion really with myself. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on the substitute? All right, seeing none. Then I think, given the weight of the decision, we'll do a roll call. All those in favor of the substitute, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Mayadze?
Will you come back to me, please?
Alder Rummel?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Tischler?
Uh, yes.
Aye? Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Vitterver?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Weheli?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Curry?
Yes.
Aye? Vice President Duncan?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye? President Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Gov. Rajan?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Yu-Gear?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Harrington-McKinnney? I'll come back. Alder Knox?
No.
No? Alder Harrington-McKinnney? Alder Harrington-McKinnney, you're muted. There you go.
Sorry about that. No.
No? Alder Mayadze?
Aye.
Aye? Madam Mayor, I have 17 ayes and two nos. Seventeen ayes, the item will pass. And that will bring us to the end of our agenda. And Alder Madison? Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Haas, I completely forgot. Can I have unanimous consent from the body? There is a space between the dollar sign and the numbers 22 in the substitute. Can I have unanimous consent that we remove that space? I'm not seeing any objection, so we will remove that. I'm so sorry, Attorney Haas. I did make a note and I completely looked past it.
So did I. Thank you.
All right, so we have no further business before us. And Alder Madison, it's your turn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.
You, too.